All right.
Is there anyone opposed? There are none to consent agenda items are passed unanimously. We are headed into an executive session next. And the KITSAF Transit Board of Commissioners will now meet an executive session to discuss potential litigation and a labor matter pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I. And the KITSAF Transit Board of Commissioners will be in executive session for approximately 15 minutes. Hope I don't have to come out and extend. The Commissioners are expected to take action following the executive session, and we will now adjourn to an executive session in the back room.
I just want to announce that there are Rolf's family plums out in the front where the coffee is. Please take some, take some home to your kids. Enjoy them. Thank you.
They are delicious.
Yeah.
Wow.
They're excited. They're still all off. They're not. We just thought it was one of them. They have to go. Yeah. Saturdays and Fridays. No, this is. I'm going to change. I'm asking basically. They shall. That's fair. And they are. Oh, yeah. Our lucky good there 24. Mentioned. We did sort of. They even made rather than a few. Okay. They will perfectly. They should have our. You know.
I think you had some of that.
Right.
Okay.
Hey. There's eating. Yeah.
Well, thanks for. We'll have the access driver of the month that needs to leave or leave that. So if we could jump in order to see the staff. And do him and then the services.
Attorney that we're seeing a lot of.
Just letting you know.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session and we are going to jump to our driver recognition at this point.
Mr. Mayor, we have Jeff Beincourt as the manager of our access program. I'll introduce the operator.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Beincourt, Access Manager. I have two operators introduced today. The first one was unable to make it. Her name is Melissa Mex. She's awarded first driver of the month award in her career. She started in May 2023. Melissa has been on the honor roll eight times in her career. She's earned one year safety driving award and just recently got promoted to schedule their dispatcher. Her words of wisdom is big or small, I give it my all. So congratulations, Melissa. Driver of the Month for July 2025, we got Mario. Mario Hernandez Torres has awarded his first driver of the month award. He has been in KITSAF Transit since March 2024. Mario has been awarded two way to go awards, has been on the honor roll three times. His personal goal is to visit Australia. Mario's hobbies include traveling and trying new restaurants. A fun fact, he has a great sense of humor. His wisdom, his words of wisdom to fellow drivers, be polite, patient and kind. Congratulations, Marty.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say that I love serving my community and giving back to my community. And it's so rewarding for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Thomas Gilbert. I'm the Operations Routed Manager here to announce two of our routed Drivers of the Month, starting with June. We have Avery Oaklanden. He is the first driver of month award that he's received. He's been with KITSAF Transit since January 2024. His achievements are 11 way to go awards, one distinguished driver award and a four time honor roll recipient. Avery has shared that his professional goal is to retire before he turns 50. So that's awesome. So congratulations to Avery and thank you for his outstanding service. All right, for our July Award for Driver of the Month is Helen Henry. She has been an operator since November of 1993, and this is her third Driver of the Month Award. Sixty-eight way to go awards, one copilot distinguished driver award, one significant safety award, 110 time honor roll recipient and 23 year safe driving award that she received in August of 2024. One of her most memorable moments was in 1996, she was driving in the snow and ice. That must have been a very tough, tough winter. So her professional goal is to retire this October. So congratulations to Helen and thank you to our outstanding service.
Cindy Griffey Worker Driver Program. Neither of my drivers can make it today, but our June Worker Driver of the Month was Michael Babcock. He was the first picture. Mike's most memorable moments are anytime he has to drive in the snow. He became a worker driver in 2012 and was also in the Navy Reserves as well as working for PSNS. And his advice to other drivers is to slow down. He works for code 290. So great for Mike. July 2025, our Worker Driver of the Month was Daniel Trout. Daniel became a worker driver in 2015 and celebrated 10 years with KITSAF Transit at the end of August. He is lead driver for the Sebeck Camp Union Route. Daniel enjoys the customer service aspect of driving the bus and advocates for the needs of his worker driver passengers. He was in the Navy prior to working at PSNS and only has five states and three continents left to visit. His words of wisdom are to be patient with other drivers, passengers and yourself. And he works in the calibration lab shop 52.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize a few of our employees with what we're calling a significant safety award. We had a situation that occurred not too long ago and our crews on two of our vessels responded incredibly well. Let me just describe the incident. It's set on a routine day in Sinclair Inlet. A serious emergency unfolded when a man fell overboard from his vessel. Aboard the Admiral Pete, Captain Brian Wood and Deckhand Lisa Lewis quickly spotted the person in the water and immediately took action. They alerted nearby vessels, including the Waterman, and made their way to the scene. The Admiral Pete was the first to reach the man in distress and attempted to use their bow mounted rescue ladder to bring him aboard. Unfortunately, the individual was too exhausted or cold to climb. Recognizing the limitations of their equipment and prioritizing the man's safety, the Admiral Pete crew called upon the Waterman, now on scene and equipped with adjacent scratel. They rescued device specifically designed for recovering individuals who cannot climb ladders. The Waterman crewed by Captain John Stark and Deckhand Nicholas Polstek and to mind you, Tillis executed a rescue with precision. They successfully retrieved the man from the water and provided initial care for cold water immersion. Once stabilized and worn, he was transferred back to the Admiral Pete, which safely returned him to his own vessel. This incident could have ended in tragedy, but thanks to the swift coordination, clear communication and expert execution by both crews, a life was saved. A special note of recognition goes to Tumiza Tillis, who, whom was his very first day aboard the Waterman. Despite having no prior experience with the vessel, Tumiza jumped in and played an important role in the rescue effort. A remarkable example of courage and composure under pressure. And please join us in congratulating Captain Brian Wood, John Stark and Deckhead Lisa Lewis, Tumiza Tillis and Nicholas Polstek for the exemplary teamwork and dedication to safety. Their actions reflected the highest standards of seamanship and responsibility. If we want to provide them with a certificate, a letter of recognition, a $50 Amazon gift card and a safety award lapel pin. And today we have Captain Brian Wood, Deckhand Tumiza Tillis and Deckhand Nicholas Polstek here today. So if the three could come forward and Mayor, if you would join me. Vernon? Captain Brian Wood. Just another day in the crew's life on Ford Kitsef Transit Fast Ferry Program. So, thank you all.
They heard it best over there. Wow. Pretty cool. All right, let's get to our business items, the first of which is Resolution Number 2560, Approval of the Worker Driver Collective by Bargaining Agreement. Mr. Lawson?
Yes, this is another.
Oh, sorry. Just want to recognize once again the efforts of both Robert Driscoll, Michael Bozart, and Mary Polly, the three primary negotiators, if you will, for the Worker Driver Contract. And we were able to reach an agreement and I understand that it was brought forward to their membership and it was approved unanimously. So we're excited about that. And this is a three-year agreement and we're asking permission, your permission to go ahead and sign this agreement. It does recognize and pretty much is consistent with the other labor agreements that we've had. We are introducing in the Worker Driver Program, a longevity program similar to what we did with all of the other folks. And although because of the part-time nature of the Worker Drivers, their milestones that they have to achieve is based on hours more so than years of service sort of thing. So we try to take that into consideration. And it does also include a signing bonus. And again, it's dependent upon their average daily days worked over 12 months and it's a three-tiered. So for, if you will, the full-time Worker Drivers, they'll receive a $750 signing bonus and then it goes to 500, 300. Again, it's tiered based on days of service. So we're excited about achieving this and we're happy to bring it forward with the request to your permission so we can go ahead and sign the agreement.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 25-60, approving the team serves local 589. Collective Bargain Agreement for Worker Driver Services effective May 16, 2025.
Second. Excuse me. A motion by Councilmember Moreauaki and a second by Councilmember Mochler. And this is a great milestone. Appreciate your, your work on this. Also, Paul, I just have a question. I know you don't benefit from this, but this, this agreement, but whether it's question for you or legal counsel, would it be appropriate for you to recuse yourself from this vote since you were involved in the negotiations?
I'm a non-voting member.
You're a non-voting member anyway, so my, my, my question was nonsense then. All right, is there any questions about the agreement? Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, congratulations. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thanks. So I guess my first question is, we're just doing the agenda out of order, right? We just jumped ahead to item seven? No, or am I?
That's where we are.
That's where we're at in the agenda. Okay, got it. Sorry, I was distracted earlier. Just really a quick question on the content of this contract. I have to say I did not read every single page of it. And I am just wondering if it covers Worker Driver routes that begin within the city of Bremerton?
This covers all Worker Driver routes.
Are there Worker Driver, because constituents have said that they cannot get Worker Driver vans if they're originating in Bremerton. So that's my specific question, I suppose.
These, these are not vans. These are buses. And currently, there are not any Worker Driver that originate in the city of Bremerton.
Could there be? Does this contract preclude them?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
Other, other questions? All right, you'll be voting on the approval of the Worker Driver Collective Bargain Agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is approved. We're to item B, Resolution 2561, award of Kitsef Transit Contract Number 25-988, Solano U.S. Coast Guard Inspection and Repairs. Mr. Lawson, this is you.
Yeah, essentially, that's exactly what this resolution covers. These vessels have to come out and out of water and be inspected by the Coast Guard every two years. If there are things that we feel need improvement on the vessel, but they don't reach the level of we need immediate action, we save up the list so that when the vessel goes in for dry dock, we can also at that same time have other things repaired or improved, which is what we did with the Solano. So we went out to bid for both the dry docking and inspection plus some of the additional work that we determined would make the vessel work or perform better. And also if the Coast Guard during their inspection happens to find anything, that will more likely be a change order. But we did go out to bid for everything that we're aware of. We did receive one bid from Nichols Brothers in the amount of $776,589. And we're asking for permission to go ahead and award this contract.
Is there a motion?
I'm good.
Go ahead.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 25-61, authorizing staff to award KT 25-988 to Nichols Brothers Boat Builders for Ben V Solano U.S. Coast Guard Inspection and Repairs Project in the amount of $776,589.
We have a motion by Councilmember Moreauaki and a second by Commissioner Walters. Are there any questions about this contract that you'd like answered? All right, you'll be voting on the Resolution 2561, awarding Kitsef Transit Contract 25988 for the U.S. Coast Guard Inspection and Repairs for the Solano. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion, the resolution passes. We're to item C now, Resolution 2562, Approval of a Travel and Meals Policy. Mr. Lawson, you have anything to add?
Yes, this is essentially a policy that we've actually been operating under for many, many years. It defines where and how Kitsef Transit would pay for any kind of travel expenses. We're not flying people first class, for example, and that sort of information. And we've been operating under this policy that was adopted many, many years ago with tweaks over the years. And it was brought to our attention at the last state audit that this policy really needs to have your blessing on it. So we're bringing it forward to the board and asking the board to go ahead and approve the travel and meal policy for Kitsef Transit employees.
Go ahead, Councilmember. Move to adopt Resolution Number 25-62, authorizing Kitsef Transit's travel and meals policy as incorporated in reference here in Exhibit A.
We have a motion by Councilmember Moreauaki and a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Mary Erickson, go ahead.
This is weird. I mean, I'm not, I'm thinking back of being a mayor for almost 16 years and I'm not sure that I've ever seen this before in any audit that we've received. So maybe you just got, maybe we just got an overzealous auditor. I don't know. But this is very strange that this is coming before us. Nor, I mean, I, I can see, I mean, especially since we have bargaining units and, and all of those kinds of things built into it. I'm just, I'm just surprised by this. And
Well, it was a policy that was originally adopted by the board many, 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 many years ago. And over the years, we've been making some minor tweaks to it, but it just, it was like, okay, let's, let's bring it forward and get fresh eyes and new eyes and
No problem. I'm just, I'm just now thinking back and thinking, have we ever done this? I mean, and I'm, you know, I'm surprised, but
We did prior to you, Mayor, which is hard to believe that Kitsef Transit existed before then.
Another touche, two, two in a row. Okay.
Right. Any further questions? All right, you'll be voting on the updated travel and meal policy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. We're to item E now, Resolution 2564 of Approval of KT 25949. Oh, nope, I'm on the wrong line. My goodness. We're to item D, which is Resolution 2563, The Johnson Park and Ride Potential Condemnation. Mr. Lawson?
Well, I'm going to defer this to Stephanie if you would like to catching her off guard, but present, this is for the acquisition of some property along 305 next to the new roundabout that the city of Pauls will just in the state put in on 305.
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Lilly, Service and Capital Development Director. Yeah, so this is asking permission to move into the next phase for a property acquisition for a parcel at Johnson Road Parkway for a park and ride location. This is asking permission to enter potential condemnation, move into mediation, and further the negotiations with the property owner so that we can move forward with this project.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there a motion? Councilmember Erickson, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion. I move approval of Resolution Number 2563, Johnson Park and Ride Potential Condemnation.
Motion by Mayor Erickson, second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Have any questions of Stephanie regarding this matter?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one thing for the record, just to be completely transparent, the property owners were represented a number of years ago from our former corporate attorney, Ron Templeton. Ron unfortunately has passed away, but his law firm still may have some records of that transaction. So because of the potential of conflict, we have hired outside consultant to help us or outside attorneys to help us with this process so that the Kitsef Law Group will not be a part of this acquisition.
Thank you for that, John. All right, hearing no questions being asked, you'll be voting on Resolution 2563, The Johnson Ride, Park and Ride Potential Condemnation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. Now we're to item E, which is Resolution 2564, which is KT Contract Number, or KT 25949, Janitorial Hours at the Bremerton Transit Center?
Thank you, Mayor. We went out to bid for janitorial services. This is a contract that is funded jointly between Kitsef Transit, Washington State Ferries, primarily to maintain the facility at the ferry terminal there in Bremerton. We went ahead and went out to bid with the expectation of the need being approximately 66 hours a week of janitorial services. We found with the increased amount of traffic through that terminal that we really need to increase that rate or amount of hours and moving it up to 81 hours a week. Because of the cost of the additional hours, it would exceed my authority, the 10%. The, the amount that will affect this year's budget is roughly around $20,000, a little over $20,000, which can be absorbed within just the operating budget itself. And for the subsequent year, we will be budgeting that amount. It's roughly 140,000, 141,000, which will be budgeted for in the 2026 budget when it comes forward for your approval. So we're asking permission to go ahead and increase the hours of janitorial service from the 66 hours to the 81 hours.
Questions or is there a motion?
Question?
Go ahead.
What, what's the State Fairies portion of hours they provide?
That's an excellent question. Paul, do you know off the top of your head what?
You can find it, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I don't know off the top of my head as, as well. And, and just as another side note, we're kind of in negotiations, if you will. This has been a joint management agreement with WSF that has been floundering for all these years. And we now have the administration of WSF that we're starting to get focused on that. But they have been contributing towards it. So we'll have to get you the number.
Go ahead and Commissioner Walter.
Yeah, I'm just curious about how many people are, are cleaning. What is this like equate to?
That, that's a good question. I don't know the amount of traffic, you know, it's, it's obviously, it's kind of like the ridership on our ferries. It's increasing and now that WSF is back to having a two-boat schedule on the Bremerton route, that just the amount of people coming through the terminal, whether it be to our customer service office or destined for the ferries has increased, but I couldn't tell you how much.
Mayor Wheeler, you have a question?
Yeah, just before I request to make a motion, was the, was this from customer feedback that the need was addressed or was more from our janitorial contract staff saying they're not able to keep up?
Well, it's, it's a combination that they can't keep up as well as our own staff who monitors that contract to make sure things are being done appropriately. I've noticed that it could certainly use more work.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2564, authorizing staff to increase janitorial hours at the Bremerton Transportation Center from 66 hours per week to 81 hours per week with an annual increase expenditure of $61,069.
Motion by Mayor Wheeler and a second by Mayor Erickson. Go ahead.
Just as a point of discussion, when in 2026, when we lose the state funding for the passenger-only ferry and we have less Kitsef Transit-related activity there, I want to bookmark taking another look at this.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all of your question when you turned away. If you could do that again.
Um, yeah, it, because we're likely to lose state funding in 2026 for our passenger-only ferry service, we will be responsible for less of the foot traffic in the terminal at that point. It might be worth revisiting with ferry system whether we should have this amped-up service.
That's a good point. And as I mentioned, we're negotiating, if you will, that split of the entire operation of the ferry terminal, certainly something that we could bring to the table.
All right, other questions or comments? Hearing none, you'll be voting on the additional janitorial hours contract for the Bremerton Transfer Center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract amendment has been approved. We are to Resolution 2552, Approval Changes to the Procurement Policy. Mr. Lawson, is this you or Mr. Schinners?
Yes, and this is just a follow-up to the discussion that the board had previously. And I'm going to ask Paul Schinners if you could come forward and actually, you could present the next two policies since they're all in your shop, if you don't mind. and actually you could present the next two policies since they're all in your shop, if you don't mind.
You're you're There you go.
Perfect. Good morning. Paul Shinners, Finance Director. So the the first of the two resolutions is uh the 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 first one is the procurement policy that we brought to the board mid-July. And uh for um most of the proposed changes, uh the board had voted to approve it, but there was uh some well, an ask to follow up with additional information in terms of the one uh delegation of authority. Currently, the executive director has delegated authority from the board to approve contract awards at a hundred thousand dollars. And so the proposal was to increase that delegate authority for contract awards to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the ask from the board was, can you tell us, you know, how many uh how many resolutions between a hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars are we really talking about? And it's really not that many. Um, in in the summary of the in the uh resolution in your your packet, we did go back and and find that information. And so going back uh through uh in twenty twenty three, there are seven. In twenty twenty four, there are eleven. And year to date, July twenty twenty five, there are just two. So it's not a lot of volume. But you know, I just it it may be helpful to to um just reiterate that we're really not talking about delegated authority to just go ahead and 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 approve a project. There's a bit of difference between a project and a contract award. And so when we develop the the budget, both the operating and the capital budget, which by the way is coming up here, we'll we'll be meeting with you again at the end of October. We go through both the operations budget as well as the capital budget, and the capital budget is is line item budget. And so we're we're running and reviewing those with all of the board members, and then we go ahead and presum- assuming that everybody's comfortable, we meet with you individually or in small groups. And then we, of course, go back to the board for their final approval, typically the first board in in November. And uh the board has hopefully had an opportunity to really understand what those projects are, ask questions what those projects are, and then, of course, approve them. So if there's anything that has not already pre been previously approved in that itemized capital budget, uh, and sometimes there is, sometimes there's things that come up that's a is a capital budget item that we didn't include in that that budget process, then regardless of the dollar amount, there is no delegate authority. Regardless, it could be a five thousand dollar capital project, and we come back to the board because you did not have that opportunity to review and approve that that proposed capital budget line item. This proposal for the policy is you've already approved it. Hopefully you recognize it. We've done the solicitation process, uh sort of a competitive process that you know, make sure it's fair and open competition. Now we're bringing that award to you to approve it, but the delegated authority is if that contracted award is less than two hundred and fifty thousand, you're just delegating that to the executive director. So that is what I'm bringing back to you, the final remaining item of what I brought uh as a proposal to the board in July. This is the one item they said timeout, we need more information. So hopefully um that resolves any any remaining questions or concerns. Questions?
Clear as mud. All right. Thank you, Paul.
Sure.
Go ahead. Move to adopt resolution number twenty five dash five two, authorizing Kitsap Transit procurement policy as provided within this resolution and incorporated within red line changes. Oh, gosh. The last lines. Oh, good golly. Incorporated in red line changes in exhibit A.
Second.
Technical difficulties over. Motion by council member Wa- uh Ma- Marawaki and a second by Commissioner Rolfes. Commissioner Rolfes, I think you largely raised some of these questions. Are you satisfied with?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Paul for taking the time to give us additionally.
Absolutely. It's a good question.
Right. Any further questions of Paul? Right, you'd be voting on the appro- the changes to the procurement policy. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? None, the changes have been approved. So don't don't go anywhere, Paul. I think this next one's you. We're now to resolution twenty five sixty five, which is the the approval of the electronic funds transfer policy.
Great, and thank you. This is similar to the the travel meals policy. Part of the uh audit last year, uh, they said, hey, there's there's a couple items that we really need to have you pull out and make sure that it's a a board uh or a policy that the authority resides with the board. And so we're 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 not asking for any changes. This, these are all the policies and procedures and controls that we've been doing. The difference is we're making it formal within policy, and we are in compliance now that this is going to be a a policy there where the the authorization resides to the board, and if there's any future changes to any of this, controls or policy or otherwise, then we would need to come back to the board and and ask for your review and approval.
All right. Is there a motion? Commissioner Root's going to get it. If he can get his mic.
It is on.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty five tac six five, authorizing Kitsap Transit electronic funds transfer policy as incorporated and referenced in hearing as exhibit A.
A motion by uh Commissioner Root, second by uh council member Marawaki. Any questions of Paul on this matter? Thank you, Paul, for your presentation. All in favor of approving the electronic transfer policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the policy has been approved.
Thank you.
All right, we're to our executive director items. Mr. Lawson, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, I just a few things. Um, one thing is I mentioned in the CAC report that I had presented to the Citizens Committee or Community Advisory Committee. If they had any thoughts or goals for twenty twenty six, and I wanted to share that uh with you folks as well as board members, if you have any ideas or thoughts of what should be a goal for twenty twenty six, if you could uh let me know on that so that we can start formulating that. As uh mentioned earlier, we're kind of into that budget formulation period right now, and now would be a great time if there are any goals to make sure that we've got the budget to reflect that. So I'm just letting everyone know that if you have thoughts or ideas, please let me know or Jackie, uh and we can get them presented to you as a package. The uh second item that I wanted to share is just to remind folks about the Week Without Driving. Uh, this is the event that uh we've uh put together your uh trip planning for your opportunity to take advantage of public transit to get to a lunch that we are uh putting together at Olympic College at the Bremerton Campus. We'll have an opportunity to not only uh take advantage of their culinary class at OC, but we'll also be able to visit with some of the leadership at Olympic College as well as the uh and the president of Olympic College will be joining us there as well. So um, please let us know if you're going to be able uh to be there. I chatted briefly with Commissioner Rolfes. It indicated that you're not going to be able to be there. Um, but I just wanted to make sure. I don't know, I guess, I understand uh councillor Rosa Pepe and Mayor Johnson are both going to be out of town during that event, but it is scheduled for um well, the week goes um September twenty ninth through October fifth, and I can't remember the dates. I'm do what's the date of the lunch? Twenty ninth, okay, September twenty ninth. So if you could let us know. So again, if if we have a quorum, we can notify it appropriately. And also, um, if you know, folks aren't interested in doing that, let me know so that I don't want to have the president there and everybody else if three of us show up, two of which is Sanjay and I, so.
Um, the
I'll I'll make sure you're not alone, so I'll come.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, so I've got you down as a yes. So, all right. Um. The other one was one of the items that the board mentioned uh a while back about uh more opportunities to learn about transit and that sort of thing. And there is a transit system in Illinois that um has done an exceptional job of bringing in fuel cell buses into their operation. Plus, they have uh installed a uh fuel hydrogen electrolyzer to generate their own hydrogen, and they also have uh developed a solar panel array uh that the solar system generates more electricity than what the electrolyzer needs to generate the hydrogen. So I've talked with the general manager there a couple times and have arranged a site visit to be able to go there and uh talk directly with them. Uh, we can pretty much certainly see the the solar farm and the electrolyzer, but more importantly, understand uh exactly how it's performing, how it works, what it costs, those sort of things. So we have that opportunity. We've uh scheduled October thirty first, um, or actually October thirty is the date of the tour um that we're going to be there. So we'll have to fly October twenty ninth uh to go to there. We'll visit the site on thirtieth and come back the next day. So please let me know if you're willing to go to that. And then finally, um, just as uh, I guess, closure, it's been a while since um, we've been able to come to and agree with Washington State Ferries. As you may recall, um, the state legislature allocated four million dollars to continue the passenger ferry operation for both us and King County uh through August of next year. So it is past World Cup. The 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 challenge that they posed was that they gave that money to Washington State Ferries and tasked them with figuring out how to split it between King County and Kitsap Transit. And for us to continue operating the level that we are currently, which includes the Saturday service through the winter months, would be approximately three point three million dollars, which didn't leave an awful lot for King County. King County has um been able to uh come up with the fundings to continue their midday operation that was being funded by the state. But they wanted that some of that funds to be used to implement um weekend service for Vashon Island, which they've not operated uh to date. So a long story short, uh in discussions that we had with WSF, uh Kitsap Transit is going to receive three million dollars of the four million. King County will receive the other million. Now for us to be able to continue operating at that amount, essentially that will fund the Monday through Friday service that we're currently doing through August of next year, but it would not fund the Saturday service, which WSF would be picking up the tab for when we would normally shut down our summer season, which is in uh you know, the September uh timeframe. So unfortunately, without that additional funding, we're going to be notifying the community that uh we would not be able to continue the Sunday, or excuse me, the Saturday service on the Bremerton route after our normal summer season, which Kitsap Transit currently pays for. And so that's just kind of a quick update on where we are uh with the funding allocation. I will say that it was a a difficult position for WSF to be in in trying to mediate between the two of us and try to make King Solomon and split that baby. So anyway, I just wanted to provide you with the update of the results of that discussion and what we'll be able to continue to operate.
So so John, when will that Saturday service change then or become non-existent?
I don't know the exact day, Sanjay. Do you know? Until next spring.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the recording, so it's the end of this month, so October first, there won't be any Saturday sailings on the high speed operation.
Out of Bremerton.
Out of Bremerton, which and then and there won't.
Well, there won't be on any of our three routes.
On any other, the the others didn't have it, so, okay. And then that resumes next spring?
Yeah, it'll it'll start back up next spring, and it should be in operation prior to World Cup next spring, so.
What are typical, and I off the top of my head, I don't know. Sunday, you know, when in the spring do we start in? May, May second. We would be our historic
Summer.
Summer, summer schedule that uh so just for clarification. Anything else?
And then the only other thing for anyone that's in the audience that might be questioning is uh notice the empty space to my left, which is normally our corporate attorney. Uh, we have Dave, oh, attending virtually, and Dave's been here uh online through this entire meeting, so we've not been without our attorney. Thank you, Dave, for for doing that.
Virtual Dave. Mayor Erickson, go ahead. Okay, all right. You're allowed to do that. Anything else, Mr. Lawson?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, we are to our public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board? You'd have three minutes. And I don't see anyone, so I will close the public comment period. And is there anything for the good of the order? Mayor Wheeler?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Kitsap Transit, obviously, for um steadfast advocacy for maintaining our ferry service and Washington State Department of um ferries um for uh appropriating three quarters of those funds, three out of the four million, to Kitsap County um to keep the fast ferry going. So it doesn't go unnoticed. It's much appreciated.
Thank you for that recognition. Mayor Walters, or excuse me, Commissioner Walters, I almost gave you a promotion.
Thank you. Mayor Silverdale. Um, I just wanted to comment that this past weekend, the Greater Kitsap Chamber ran the pop-up ferry of the port to port uh ferry between Silverdale and Bremerton, and I got to hang out quite a bit with the ferry. And it was a really great response. We had about fifteen hundred riders, and uh overall people loved it. A lot of comments were, wish we could do it every, like have this all the time. It was positive. We let them know that it might be running during the World Cup next summer. Again, hopeful again for the BlackBerry Festival, and everybody really was appreciative of that. And they had, and I have to grab my notes, there were visitors from all over, from Maryland and from New York, like from quite distances that really appreciated the opportunity to ride the ferry as well. So it was like a fun tourism event as well, as well, um, people loved it who typically don't get to ride or see our community from the water. So it was it was a great success. People were very, very happy about it and then and uh, yeah, look forward to doing that again. Good proof of concept.
Mayor Erickson, go ahead.
I was I was just wondering, uh, the World Cup made me think of this. Um, where are we with the Orca card and the ability to be do tap to pay?
They are working on upgrading the system, and the plan is by the first part of next year, that uh open payment method will be available.
Just on that World Cup, I I'd heard secondhand that uh Pierce County is buying two of the Armitas boats to run service. Is there is there any truth to that rumor?
That's the first I've heard of, but I don't know.
I know Ryan Mello's been uh a champion of that down in in Pierce County for a long time, but uh it was something, somebody told me I just, so I'll uh I'll be interested to see if it is true or not. So go ahead, uh, council member.
Um, I had the opportunity to attend the rodeo up at South Kitsap High School uh with my grandson. Uh, we had delightful time and watching the events go on, and I ju- John, I didn't know if you had any uh update of how uh Kitsap drivers did.
Well, as a matter of fact, I I can share that the uh we had three operators uh place uh first in our uh our rodeo. Uh, a familiar name, Val Quill, who is the national champion, uh place first. Uh, her son Her son, Damian, who drives in our access program, placed first in the cutaways. And then her name is escaping me. Alyssa? Lexi, excuse me, Lexi. She's a young lady that's only been with us for, what, two, three years? She's placed before, and she placed in the, in our rodeo as well. We just had the state competition, which essentially what we tell our operators that if they place in any of the top three, that they would get to go to the national competition. And Val placed the third in the 35-foot category. So she's going to be going to Omaha, Nebraska next year to compete in the Nationals once again. And our maintenance team placed, I believe, third in the state competition as well. So they will be going to Salt Lake City, if I remember correctly, to compete in the national competition there. Unfortunately, the other two operators did not get in the top three. So but two of our four teams, if you will, did place in the top three. They will be going on the Nationals.
Go ahead. Had one more comment. Thank you, John, for that update. You all, Kitsap Transit gave us each a book. I found it a very insightful reading, especially since we make decisions for non-drivers and most of us drive. I would highly recommend that our city councils get a copy of it as we go through in planning too. So thank you, John, for sharing with that. I thought it was a really good read. So thank you.
For that, Jay. Other last good of the order before we adjourn? Go ahead, Councilmember.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. So I just had a question about a couple of figures on page 126 of our packet, the total boarding system-wide, that compares the second quarter of 2019 to 2024 and 2025. And I was wondering about, like, fast ferry seems to have rebounded well. Routed is, is making steady increases to get back to 2019 levels. But on-demand seems to have fallen substantially and to be continuing to fall. And I was wondering, has there been any analysis done on why that is so?
Not that I'm aware of. We'll have to look into it to see if we can determine specifically where that is occurring. But I don't have an answer for you.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's quite, it's not just that it's a decrease, but that it continues to decrease, which seems Okay, thank you.
All right, last call for good of the order. I will adjourn this meeting, Matt. I will adjourn this meeting then.